Good evening and welcome to the January 28, 2014, special meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen and Sewer Commissioners, who are meeting tonight in conjunction with the School Committee and the FinCom. So at this moment, we'll wait for the other two bodies to open their meetings.
I'd like to open up the meeting of the joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the FinCom. I'll take a motion to open the meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are open.
We won't be opening a meeting as we are one member short of opening, so therefore, we're just observing.
Okay. Just so everybody knows what's going on, the two bodies, plus some members of the FinCom, are gathered here to discuss the latest set of numbers regarding the 2014 budget. We've already had the department hearings before the FinCom. We have those before us. We have also a document, Town of Wareham 10-year snapshot, or as I call it, the way we were, comparing fiscal 2005 to fiscal 2014 projected, to show where the differences are. We also have something from Administrator Sullivan that talks about the local aid assessments and does a comparison between last year and this year, and also the local aid estimates themselves. So with that in mind, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sullivan, just to speak first to these numbers and give us a general overview of what we're looking at.
Thank you very much. The first document that we will pull is the Town of Wareham 10-year snapshot. In going through this, you'll see the first column is the FY14 projected, second column is the FY2005, that is, what was voted at town meeting, including the October adjustments. You'll see over the 10 years, the growth in the real estate taxes, two and a half authorized. Growth has shrunk during, even when 2005 started, that was probably towards the tail end of when real estate started to go down, so I believe the few years before that, we were probably looking at growth rates somewhere, growth dollars somewhere in the $800,000 to $900,000 range. If we go to the next line, you'll see the intergovernmental transfers, which is the Chapter 70 aid. Over that time, we've received an additional $1.3 million. However, if you remember, at the time, there was school construction aid of about 1.17. Charter schools, those funds have increased by about 137, so if you netted that out, we're looking at about $438,000 in increased aid. The local government's pretty interesting in that if you go through it, you're looking at about a $103,000 reduction. Estimated local receipts and reimbursements, they have essentially stayed the same. One of the big reasons is motor vehicle excise tax. In 2005, people had newer vehicles, it was before we really hit the lost decade, if you will, and you can see that at that point, you were looking at approximately $2.68 million in motor vehicle excise tax, whereas now, we receive in budget roughly $2.13. So the difference between the two is $226,000. Here's one of the big items that wasn't really a prudent measure, and we don't do it today, is in the available funds. You'll see that the FY2005 budget was balanced with $1.3-plus million worth of free cash. The other large item, the difference, is the water pollution control. You'll see that they had an admin fee in there as well, of about $922,000 at the time, which was approximately a $400,000 difference than what we have from the health insurance and the fringe benefits. So is there any questions on the revenues from the snapshot?
What's, just briefly, the CAGR?
In.
Alright.
So when you look at that, you'll see what sort of, what sort of the growth is. If every year, property taxes, when you include the authorized, the 2.5 percent, plus the new growth, you're approximately 3.6 percent. The cherry sheet aid, .2 percent, increasing every year. And our local receipts and reimbursements, negative .4 percent is the growth. And our available funds, negative 11.8 percent. So this is, obviously, I won't go down line by line throughout the whole, through all general government side, but you can see what some of the growths are and what some of the reductions. The audit has increased substantially. General services have had a large decrease. The difference, and I want everybody to remember the differences between budgeted and what was actually expended, could be, could be a large difference. Our IT costs have gone up, and you'll see that's mainly the technology expenses side. And in going, going through this, one of the largest decreases is in municipal maintenance, 22 percent overall, or a two-point, negative 2.4 percent CAGR. That's from wages and also in expenses. Our snow and ice has increased as the costs of the storm go, storms go up. Police wages on that same, excuse me, if you go about, let's say, one-third of the way down, you'll see that the police are growing approximately 1 percent per year and have grown 420,000, or 11, 11 percent, mainly on the capital, which is the vehicles and the wages, which was when they had hired new officers. So as we continue on, you'll see the next line is the library that's large. It's a 55 percent overall reduction, or negative 7.7 percent. We know that last year's, and the FY14 budget, was a large reduction for them. So overall, on the general government side, if you look at it, the expenses of capital have increased by 1 percent, or have grown by .1 percent annually, and the wages have decreased by 218,000, or negative 3 percent, or a growth rate of negative .3 percent. As we go through, you'll see the school, there was an increase, I think the annual is 1.4 percent, but the non-net school spending, which is the buses, has decreased 2 percent, or negative .2 percent. The decrease has been in just the non-net school spending line, so a total of 15 percent, or 1.4. The fixed cost, the debt, has significantly gone down by 66 percent, or negative 10.3 percent annually. And so obviously, you'd see the same things in the debt of the interest of the short and long term. General liability insurance has actually, believe it or not, decreased, and that was an interesting one to, to look at, but that's, I don't know why that would be unless we've made, we made some changes, but I know that we do receive MIA reimbursements, so that was interesting. The reserve fund, if you look in the, in FY14 budgets and such, the reserve fund is actually kept in the general government side, and for FY14, that was 75,000. The rest of these are small, sick leave bonus, it was kept as an employee benefit in FY2005, that is, in FY14, shows up in the general side, general government side. Here are, here are the employee benefits, and really the large ones. If you look, the retirement contribution since 2005 has increased $1,400,000, or 98 percent, compounding annual growth of a rate of 7 percent. The workers' comp has increased, compensation insurance has increased 180,000, or 70 percent, or growing approximately 5.4 percent. Unemployment, that's really, it's going to depend on whatever year you're, you're a part of. Medical insurance is interesting, 4.2 million, it was in 2005. FY14, we'd budgeted 6.7. That's a $2.5 million increase, or 60 percent, comp, growth of 4.8 percent. And the life insurance and FICA have all grown approximately 2.9 to 3.3 percent. So employee benefits have increased 4.3 million, or 68 percent, or an annual growth, compound growth rate of 5.3 percent. So that was a lot to go through at once.
Just a quick comment, something that doesn't show up here directly as a line item, but on the cherry sheets, and maybe you're going to get to it.
Oh, yeah, it's the last page.
The, on the cherry sheets, there's an item under the assessments, which is retired teachers' health insurance. So it's another health insurance component. Back, certainly when Pat and I were on the FinCom, that number was $200,000 to $300,000 a year. It's now 1.2, 1.3 million dollars, another piece of the healthcare problem in this country.
Yeah, if you go to the final page on the back.
Have you done this with just straight head count by department? This same comparison, so we know how many people were in each?
Yeah, you'd actually have to extrapolate that data. I don't have the, I haven't been able to do that, nor do I have the time. I know that we have.
Personnel records?
Selectman White's side has been working on. Actually, our record is the annual town report, which doesn't, just lists employees and their, what they've made for salary, including overtime. Then it is up to you to match that person's name to their department, so you need somebody with some memory of the town.
So it's a worthwhile exercise.
And the Selectman White's side, I've actually asked to work on that, I'm not saying she's had tons of history, but she knows some, some parts of the town, so.
To your point, Tom, I think going forward, it would be good if we could get the annual reports compiled in that fashion, so-and-so how much department worked for. It's just one more line for the department head to identify to the clerk in preparing the town report.
Was it, was the town about 3 percent smaller, 2 percent smaller? Head count for the town?
It was about 1,000 people difference in terms of census.
2 percent?
The town or the, are you speaking in residence?
You're talking about the census, right?
Yeah.
According to the census.
About 5 percent. It's like 4 and 1/2.
You can't just do that, excuse me, the town clerk, what she does is she prints the summary payroll account. So in order for her, I've already talked with Judy Lozon, in order for somebody to be identified, I would have to understand a whole lot more about the school system's way of accounting for people than I do. It, it's a, it doesn't just, it's not going to be able, it's not going to be something that Mary Ann, or the clerk, or whoever prepares the annual report is going to be able to do very easily.
Yeah, it's an excellent exercise, and something we need to go forward, because how do you compare year to year when you have, if you look back a decade, I'm sure, people thought they would know everything about their own departments, and I think we only have about two or two department heads left from that, from that era.
Another way of looking at it, because I've been looking at this, I have a spreadsheet at home, as I was mentioning to Derek, that goes back to fiscal year 2001. If you take all of the increased revenue since 2001, literally, 50 percent of all of that increased revenue from all sources has gone to employee benefits.
So you manage the town, head count. You got them.
And if you look at the number of employees, I don't know whether you did a current head count, but the, the head count in 2005 was just a little over 1,000 people.
Yeah, if you looked from the, the breakdown of the departments, the finance committee for the first time had this year, where it breaks out and shows each, each position in that department, and then gives a head count per department and per general side of the government. So that's one of the things we want to, that's actually going to be part of the town report, I believe, in the, in the end, and it can help make future decisions.
And shared with other, other towns, compared with other towns, and things of that nature.
What do you mean, Tom?
Well, I mean, how is Carver, Rochester, Born, what do they look like from a head count point of view, by department?
Yeah, you'll, you'll want to find like communities, try and go, yeah, I would compare budget size plus population, and there's a, there's a few to really come down with like communities. You know, obviously, Carver's, Carver's police and school department would be substantially different than what we, we would have, so. But if we go to page six, and this is what Swett was alluding to, county and state assessments in FY2014, 2.4 million, it had been 1,26,000 in 2005, and you're looking at almost a $1.4 million increase. Veterans assessments have gone up 259 percent, or are growing annually about 13.6 percent. So these, if we saw there was a little increase in, in state aid, and it completely went away. So the, the other interesting item is, if you look under Articles, the Upper Cape Cod Tech, in FY2005, had been a little over 1.7 million, and we just.
Ow.
Don't look at me.
That wasn't very nice.
In FY, in FY14, we're looking at just under $3 million, so it's increased 75 percent, or the, the annual growth of 5.9. Let's make sure everyone can hear me.
Put that one out of service and use this one.
But that's, when you go through all of this, this is what you're looking like, looking at. Obviously, there's more information to take out of this, but this is the document that I think everybody could look for and use as a tool to see where we've been, and this will help us make our future projections as well.
For students.
So if we look at the next document, it is the Town of Wareham Draft FY15 Budget, which I'm going to call it budget number three, has 1/2014 as the date. I'm going to ask that everybody turns it to the backside, page six of six, this is what we're all looking at for the FY15 requested funding. Our deficit projected for FY15 is $2,908,525. Again, $2,908,525.
$4 bottle of water.
The, we received one of the big changes, we'd been going off of a number of approximately $2.5 million. We did receive the first, first local aid assessments and revenues, you've been given that double-sided paper. When you go through that, it's, you'll be able to see, see what the differences were, so.
Not much of a change.
We can go through the revenues, we can go through the expenditures, we can go through every single line item, but I guess the, the question is, $2.9 million, what are we going to do?
Is Upper Cape the real number?
I've not been given a real number from them.
We won't have that till probably March, is what I'm understanding.
I know that we've been, we've estimated some numbers before and had to change when it's coming higher, so let's consider this a conservative number. If it comes in lower, $2.8 million for a deficit, so.
Our meeting's not open, be careful.
And I'll open it up to anybody that wants to go over anything, ask any question, has any ideas, or where we want to go from here. And that wasn't proper English, so I shouldn't say that with the school.
Anything, maybe before we open it up? Or should we just open it?
We can do a brief overview of the school. Our proposed budget amount will be $27,704,474. This would be a 3 percent increase over the FY14 budget, and I would turn it over to Michael then for more detail.
Thank you very much. So we started, we put together a level service budget, assuming no changes, and that puts in a, just under a 6 percent increase in FY14, so we embarked with the Joint Board and gave another number of proposals, three reductions to arrive at the number the superintendent outlined. So as well as making savings on supplies and materials, looking at reconfiguring our elementary schools, including closing the preschool, the East Wareham Elementary School, reorganizing Special Education Department.
Mike, can you introduce the mic?
Sorry. So I'll start again with the reductions, so we're making savings on supplies and materials, reducing from our level service budget, as well as reconfiguring the elementary schools and closing the East Wareham Elementary Childhood Center, which will, you know, achieve savings, most importantly, through reduction of positions, and also reorganizing the Special Education Department. And again, that achieves a saving through reduction of positions, as well as some supplies and materials, and a few other modest, a few other, hey, staff reductions. And that, those savings, that amounts to a reduction in our budget of just under, around $765,000, you know, cuts 16 positions, and that's what gets us down to the, gets us down to the increase that the superintendent outlined.
I mean, I think that what, what Derek said before about pretty much opening it up, and I think that you said it kind of perfectly, we're looking at 2.9, so what are we going to do about it? And, you know, I was hoping that we would come here today because we all have, I think, dissected different parts of this budget. I think that we have formed either public or private opinions regarding the, the budget and the 2.9, and again, that's not derogatory whatsoever, just, I know that I have an opinion about the 2.9, which was 2.4, or 2.5 yesterday. So what I was hoping to accomplish today, this could just be about communicating to the community what the problem is, but we also, I think, are responsible for, with those formed opinions or with ideas, you know, we all read the newspapers, we all read the blogs, we all, you know, talk to constituents, young and old, and so there are ideas that people have that, that I think are important to get on the table, and to basically scribe them, to, to write them down, to have one or two or three ideas that we ask our town leaders, the town administrator and the superintendent, to be able to go and really dive into those. And we're talking about, we know that cuts need to happen, and we, the superintendent and the town administrator probably have ideas where the line items are, and it's going to be devastating, but they know that they're going to have to cut. So I'm not talking about so much cutting and going line by line, but I'm talking about truly restructuring, or something big that'll help restructure the budget, or an idea that can help, well, talking about new revenue coming to the town. You know, the, the bad words that we're all talk about, and there are some people that agree with it and some that don't, but true, just real ideas that we can put down on paper and then go back to the, and say to the superintendent, "Explore these more and come back and make recommendations on, on whether you think that it can work or not." We all can say what we think should be done, but it's ultimately the responsibility of the TA and superintendent to run their parts of this town. So if we do have ideas, it's important to get them out there, so then maybe they can then say, "All right, these are the three things, now let's work together, dive down into the details, and come back and say, 'This is viable or it's not for this year.'"
There's another option that you didn't throw out there?
And just so you know, I'll be the scribe for any ideas that come up. If I can ask another person to be a volunteer, describe also, so I make sure that my notes are correct.
It would be increasing the funding of the town. Don't want to use the word override, because I'll get shot, or I'll have flat tires when I go outside. In the preliminary work that I did for Mr. Sullivan, from 2005 to the requested budget, there was a huge reduction in the number of people who work for this town in the general government side. I, at one, there were 70 police officers. How many are there today?
34.
That's huge.
34.
70 to 34, and that includes the chief, it included janitors, and, you know, included everybody who reported on the police.
56.
I'm sorry, it, it was 70, it is now?
34 is just the officers.
It's 56, isn't it, or 58, something like that?
I'd have to pull it up real quick.
You have to call, you got, I mean, if you want to come to management people.
Well, it's what was in the 72. So what was in the 72, and then what was in the 36?
In the 70.
I don't have my.
Yeah, it included all janitors, it included the IT people, it included.
Well, municipal maintenance is down to 13.
Right, and, and that number was huge. Well, and it had separate divisions, you know, there was a cemetery division, there was a, you know, separate divisions that were, that were fully staffed, and we're now down to beyond bare bones. And it, it seems to me that, well, first of all.
59.
59?
Right.
Okay, so it, it's 11 in 10 years, and that number is representative of what has happened to all of the town departments, minus the school, I can't speak for the school numbers. How much further do we want to drive this town under before we recognize the fact that if you want something, you have to pay for it? There is no free lunch. All of those great little sayings, "If we want a better blah blah, we got to pay for the blah blah." If we want cleaner streets, if we want more policemen on the street, we have to spend the money. And I don't, I honestly don't think that there are places to cut anymore. My personal opinion is that we're into the bone, we are not down to the bone, we are into the bone.
Okay, I, I didn't go back to 2005, because frankly, I think you can tell the story with just 13 to 15, if you really want to go at it. Our expenses have grown over that period of time by $4 million, and our revenues have increased by $1.7 million. What's really funny is if you take general government and school district and put them together, that represents less than 10 percent of the, of the growth in expenses. The majority of them comes from debt, benefits, offsets, and, and Upper Cape. That's really where it comes from. So when we talk about cutting the budget, we're cutting out of that 10 percent. We're not cutting out of the 90 percent, we're cutting out of the 10 percent. And you can only cut so far down in the 10 percent, and this year alone, if we try to carve $2.9 million out of this budget, we're going to do it again next year, because these items are not going to stop growing. And they're going to grow, there's, there's a little bit of that when you, when you start reducing some head count, but the reality is, these things do not stop growing, so we have to, and we call it, on the FinCom, you might like this, we call it a revenue adjustment, which is really what, what we're looking at here, and, and it's not something I think everybody in this room wants to do, but it's something, at some point in time, we're either going to have to do, because we can't continue to do this every single year until we take the, the smallest piece and cut it down to nothing. And that's just, you know, we just can't do that. So we're working as a, as a finance committee, starting tomorrow night, and I think we would like to put together a framework of how to fix this. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to get 100 percent. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to get a hundred percent buy-in from everybody at this table, but one of the things is it doesn't really matter what we want. It'll have to come down to a vote, and that's the people out there. And so, what we have to do is be able to convince the people that this is what we want. We can throw all the highbrow analysis work at them, but what we really need to do is bring it into some sort of a visual aid and so they understand. And I think, you know, we've had a couple of discussions and, and we have one option, which is a two-point-nine million dollar machete to the throat, basically. Or, we're going to have to have another option where we're going to have to not just, not just ask for the money, if you will, but we're going to have to show them that we have a level of fiscal responsibility to take that money and do the right things with it. And not just fix, or not just fix operations up to now, but we need to be able to show that we're going to be able to repair some of the damage. We don't have any money for infrastructure. We've obviously spent the last ten years avoiding it, but that's something we have to do. We have other issues we have to fix. So, what we have to be able to do is tell the people, not only are we asking for this money, this is what we're going to do over the next five years. We can't just look at this as two thousand and fifteen. We have to look at this in five-year increments because if we don't, we're destined to fail.
I'm sorry. We've inherited a system which was broken before we inherited it. We inherited a system of funds coming in that was broken before we were in place. We're so far behind, we're at a point where it's not a simple fix. I believe I heard on the radio today when I was coming in, I think it was Falmouth, who we look at as fairly wealthy community, shouldn't be having problems. They were announcing today that they were having a meeting tonight. They're cutting forty-four teachers and are going to try and see if they can get a debt exclusion or an override pass because they're going to have to cut basically to the bone on their budgets everywhere. Bone has issues, which bone's always been well off. We really don't have much choice because you have to have a balanced budget per se. And if you have a dollar, you can only spend a dollar. I believe what we're going to have to do is get to that balanced budget, cut out whatever things we have to cut, list them out and show people, "If you want this, this is what it's going to cost per person, per household." There's no way around this. The problem is we don't have any time. I can sit there and tell you we have more revenue coming into the town, but it takes two and three years before you actually see anything come in. We have fringe benefits which, you know, town employees for years, I remember way, way back when I was in Brooklyn in the sixties, town employees didn't make much money, but they got great fringe benefits because that was the deal. Nobody thought long-term what those fringe benefits would cost, twenty, thirty, forty years down the road. They have killed us, never mind killing us, they've killed us. They've virtually bankrupted every town and city in Massachusetts, probably the country. We need to go look at our fringe benefits, our programs, to see where we can find some relief any way we can. Because no matter what we do, come next year, we'll probably have another million plus just in that alone. If you look at the numbers over the last three years, it just doesn't work. I'm not doom and gloom, but I'm just saying is at this point here, as far as the town side goes, we're going to have to basically close departments down and say, "People, if you want this, it's going to cost you a dollar fifty, you know, on your tax rate." The school department is going to probably have to do the same thing. Every department in town's going to have to do it. There's no sense in sitting there trying to figure this or that. It's the bottom line, you got a dollar, we split it between all the different departments. At the end of the day, each department has to run it as best they can for that. And that's what they have to come up with, and then it's up to the town if they want anything more than that. Because we can't supply it to them, we don't have the money. And I don't know how to get out of the liabilities and the retirement programs and the benefits that we've locked ourselves into. The unions have us.
I don't disagree with anything that, that Larry and Alan said. If, nothing else comes out of tonight's meeting, I think we, as three bodies, should challenge the town administrator, the superintendent, and maybe the FinCom if they'd like to accept that role, but certainly the town administrator and the superintendent to develop, actually, it's the town administrator with the assistance of the superintendent, to develop two budgets for town meeting. One is contingent upon an override and one is if the override does not pass. That is not a unique thing to do. It is a part of the law that we can do precisely that. A few years ago, I asked, so the, the date is maybe two, three years old. I asked John Foster to calculate what a million-dollar override would cost the median household. And it was about a little over sixty dollars a household. So, if we wanted to solve the three-million-dollar problem, we're talking about a little less than two-hundred dollars for the median household. I think it's important to get those kind of facts because people have a way of, of making really big numbers. Now, I'm not suggesting that two-hundred dollars is a really small number for some people, but it is what it is. And the advantage, of course, of a three-million-dollar override is that it's perpetually there. And you don't end up with, as our finance chair was saying, you know, a crisis a year from now because that's bad for two reasons. One is you don't want to have annual crises. And second, the town says, "I thought we solved the problem," and we didn't, so we've lost credibility. And the third thing I would say is that if you do the simple calculation of difference between the current projections for FY fifteen and what the projections are for FY fourteen, we're talking about a six-point-one percent increase in healthcare premiums. Six-point-one percent. I don't know about you, but I'm tired of hearing the fact that the cost of healthcare is actually going down. That is the biggest BS line I've heard in a long time, and it's dangerous for people to be saying that perhaps for political reasons on the national front. It isn't happening. The, the curve may be slightly bending in the right direction, but it's continuing to go this way. And six-point-one percent is killing us, and the average over the last decade or so says that it's likely to kill us. And the fourth thing I'll say, which is perhaps radical, but that's never stopped me, I actually do not believe that we can really solve this problem if we really don't throw it at the institution that has caused this problem, which is we spend, let's call it twice, it's probably a little bit more than twice. We spend a little bit more than twice what virtually all the other developed countries in the world do on healthcare. It is not the town's fault. It is certainly not our employees' fault that these costs are out of control. And by the way, everybody knows the morbidity, mortality statistics say, "We're not getting better care, folks. We're just spending twice as much or more as everybody else." A radical notion, which can't be solved tonight, can't even be explored tonight, is to radically diminish the number of people who are covered by healthcare by the town and use healthcare.gov as a way of getting coverage. Why is that, that is literally now for the first time ever possible. If I had said that a year ago, it would have been a non-starter because that didn't exist. The system of making sure that regardless of your age, your sex, your pre-existing condition, all of those things would have hurt terribly the individual employee. Now, you can go to a website, not only get health coverage without being discriminated against for any of those reasons, you can get subsidized healthcare courtesy of the federal government. Well, if they haven't solved the problem of the fact that they're killing every city and town with the way healthcare is provided in this country, then they can at least take on the problem because frankly, we can't survive as a town providing healthcare to all our employees, and it is not their fault.
The Affordable Healthcare Act fees for next year are estimated at a little over a hundred thousand dollars. That's for the passage of it. That will be built into the rates that we'll be paying. I met with Ms. Hastings from GBS today, and we are looking at a double-digit increase. Our, our health run rate for this year had been as high as a hundred and nine percent, had gone down to one-oh-one, and it's leveling off at a hundred and five percent. So, one of the things people forget is insurance doesn't mean that you pay your premium with us and then, then the costs are paid by the insurance company. They are paid in whole by the health trust. Unless you go over a hundred thousand dollars in claims, then the stop-loss kicks in. If you go in for a doctor's visit and you pay a copay of five dollars and there's a bill for two-hundred, it isn't the insurance company eating two-hundred, it is the health trust fund that pays two-hundred dollars. So, that's just, we spoke today to, I guess the term would be better educate ourselves and our employees and have the, the members from Blue Cross and Harvard Pilgrim come down and hold some seminars on that so that people understand that when you, when you go to the ER and it's a thousand-dollar visit, that again, it is not the insurance company's money, it is the health trust fund's money. Thank you.
Well, getting back to the ten-year snapshot, if you take the one-point-four million increase from two thousand and five to twenty-fourteen in the retirement contribution, which is essentially a doubling of that number, and you take the two-point-five million increase in the medical insurance, it's, it's easy to see that essentially what we've done is transferred three-point-nine million dollars at minimum just for those two items out of operations, services for the townspeople and put them, you know, into this, these two buckets, if you will. So, this is why you have a thirteen-man municipal maintenance department. This is why in the administration, where there used to be five full-town people, full-time people, you've got three full-time people and a part-timer. This is why when people complain about potholes, they don't get fixed quite as immediately as they might have in the past. So, this is, this is where the money's going, so this document is very useful in that regard. One of the things that we had discussed, I think, last year, I don't know that it ever really took on any life because we didn't have the initial money to invest, but I think that there was some discussion about savings that could be achieved if we handled the, the health trust fund in a different fashion. If we went with different providers, it would not necessarily affect the benefits that the employees would receive, or certainly not their care, but it would be beneficial to the town in terms of cost containment. And as I understand it, and I'm hoping somebody can refresh my memory here, the big stumbling block was that we didn't have the cash to get in the door.
One-point-six million, wasn't it?
Yeah, approximately one-point-six million. That's including, you'd need approximately a one-million-dollar IBNR to be held for two years, so...
Yeah.
You would need approximately a one-million-dollar incurred but not reported, so you'd hold those, they would hold those funds set aside, and that would be for two years. Going to the, is the Mayblock, which is the old Plymouth County, which we were a part of... Going to that doesn't necessarily save you money right off the bat. What it does do is prevents, prevents, if there was a surplus in the health trust fund, as we have now, but an even larger one, it prevents us from using those to, to basically enhance our budget for one year. It's, it makes it more practical. And one of the things that we are forgetting is that last year, the employees started with their cut of the health insurance. And I mean, a cut to, to the town's costs and an increase to theirs. For FY fourteen, it starts off going for the split from seventy-five, twenty-five to seventy-thirty. And then in FY fifteen, it will go to sixty-seven and a half, thirty-two and a half. It is a six-year program. Over that time, it will save the town four and a half million. But, it will take out of the employees' pockets, if you have a family plan, for FY fifteen, roughly sixteen-hundred dollars. And if you're on a single plan, five-hundred-and-forty dollars. So, on the health side, you know, besides what other avenues we can take, the employees have worked with us to give back, and giving back four and a half million to the town over six years.
If we're looking at historic six-percent increases, which is what sixty percent over ten years tells us, then, you know, despite the give-back, we're still going to be expending more and more and more on this item. And at, at some point, you know, what do you, what are we, what are we going to be reduced to? Trying to negotiate contracts where we do not provide health insurance? Ultimately, if, if this trend is six percent a year, you're there in how many years? I mean, you're, Larry, you're the, you're the numbers guy.
Oh, no, my numbers are gone right now.
Yeah, but in twelve years, if you keep growing at six percent, ten or twelve years, then you cannot, you cannot offer this any longer. So, this, this is really, I think, the, the big elephant in the room that we've got to figure out, you know, how to fix, how to keep it from screwing up the rest of the budget because it absolutely does, and, and try to get some idea of how to contain it while at the same time, you know, not, you know, jamming it all on the employees. In other words, trying to look for a better, more efficient system. So, you know, I don't have an answer to that, I can ask the question, but...
Just to follow, just real quick on that, is, you know, one of the things that we had talked about is the school system is one of the biggest employers in the town. And right now, or we haven't been at the table when it comes to negotiating with, with the healthcare coverage, and it's just something that we would like to ask for if the school side can actually be at the table when talking with the insurance providers because we might be able to not only, and it's not just about being able to interject and, you know, provide ideas, which hopefully it would help, but also it allows us to be able to be in the know, so we're going back and negotiating that we have all the information, and then we can go back and, and help with the negotiations on our side also. Right now, we haven't been at that table, and I think that it would be beneficial to the town side also if we were.
Yeah, the, the school was invited, the superintendent at the time and such, and we did, we did work...
The last superintendent?
And let them know about it, so...
Okay.
And obviously, the, who led the discussions, because it's the largest group, is the MTA. So, it was from, and the agreement that we have is a six-year agreement. Now, we can meet with the PEC and see if we would like to change some of, some of the plans and such, but there will not be any more drastic changes, so...
Okay, so, you know, the retirement system was built on the idea that the average person lived two-point-five years beyond retirement. People live what now, twenty, thirty years beyond?
I hope so.
Nice knowing you, Cliff.
Cliff in particular. But, believe it or not, I read the statistic, it was two-point-five years was the average age of somebody. Well, but it doesn't matter, the system was built that way. So, all the retirement things were based on that, and of course, as time went on, nothing changed. People, the retirement age didn't go up, nothing changed, and we kept throwing more and more money into it, and of course, that's a problem. The, the fact that healthcare keeps rising all the time, that's a problem. But, it's the system that we're under that is the problem to begin with. Proposition two and a half is what's called phased-in bankruptcy, okay? And, and everybody knew this from the very beginning. And I think people at home need to know this. Because the problem with it was that it wasn't equitable for the towns as a whole. If you took a town like Weston, Massachusetts, where I'm from originally, they have eight-million-dollar houses on every corner. They got a billion dollars probably, or more, in real estate levy base. So, when they get a chunk of money, they get half the amount of people to deal with than we do. And they get millions of dollars every year in extra money to run the town. And they override Proposition two and a half for schools on a regular basis. Okay, they spend more money than anybody else for schools. We started out, and look what our levy base is, thirty-three million. So, we get a whole, boy, what, we get eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars in extra money to spend. And as we know, we already talked about six percent. I remember when I was on the FinCom, when the number was double digits, I remember one year when it went up twenty-one percent, you can remember that. Twenty-one percent in healthcare costs. So, it's the system that's bad. And then, of course, let's take the fact that it was, there was supposed to be no unfunded mandates, if you remember correctly. As part of Proposition two and a half, if the state mandated something, they had to pay for it. But what they do is they vote for it, and then they pass another resolution that exempts it from the position of Proposition two and a half. So, we end up getting stuck with the unfunded mandates as well. See, people, people at home really don't know this. They don't know the fact that, what, five years ago, no, almost ten years ago now, right? Ten years ago, they devalued cranberry bogs by fifty... devalued cranberry bogs by fifty percent because cranberry industry had had a fall because of Wisconsin. When they did that, all that money shifted to all the residents. They picked up the extra taxes, because that's how Proposition two and a half works. You raised two and a half percent over the levy before, if that money's in the levy, somebody else is paying it. That's all it means. That means all the residents ended up paying for that. So, it's the system that we work under that's the problem. And I don't see how you get around the system. You know what I'm saying? So, if it's the system, then we have to use the system to fix it. If the system says that the way around the system is that you have to go out there and prove to people that you needed an override, then you have, then that's what we have to do. It's as simple as that. If that's what the system is, and that's how it's designed, and that's what we live in, then that's what we have to do. And we, all of us, have to make that case. And I mean, all of us.
Just, just a, just a quick one here. Our local taxes have gone from sixty point two percent of the total revenue to sixty-three point two, and the cherry sheets have dropped from twenty-seven point one down to twenty-six point eight. So, little by little, we're funding more and the state is funding less, which is, goes to what you were saying.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, um, our, but our revenue in total's only increasing three point one percent versus the expenses which are going up, well, we know seven, seven percent or something along that line. Um, it's not override, it's revenue adjustment, just, just for the record. But, but you're right. It, it's not a question of, the system's broke, but we can't fix it. It started in nineteen eighty. If I've read enough on it to know that it's not a system for a town like ours to, to get ahead. But, you see a town like Born, who's used the override to get to where they needed to go as well. The problem isn't, isn't so much explaining it, it's explaining it in a way that the people will understand and trust us, because it's okay to vote at town meeting, and then it comes to the selectmen. And then the selectmen have to vote on whether to put it on the ballot. And once you get it on the ballot, then the people can vote, but it's not, thank God, it's over, because now we have to show a level of fiscal responsibility, or we're not going to get out of this, this jam. You can look for three million dollars in override money, and that's great. But, if you don't use it properly, if we don't use it to repair our infrastructure, and no doubt, there's probably still some cuts that need to be made to a certain degree in order to get to where we need to be in ten years. We need to start now, but it's not just, it's to repair it and then prepare for the future. We need to start building, you know, reserves. We need to get to the point that we're born, where we got, I don't know, was it eight point something million dollars sitting back just in case something goes wrong? I mean, I'd like to have that, but we don't have that. We have no reserves, we're not funding our capital, our infrastructure's down. So, when people talk about operating, this isn't an operational override. This is something we need to do to fix the town going forward.
Well, Born also took two and a half million dollars out of their enterprise fund.
Yeah, I, I...
And transferred it to government, so that helped them a huge.
All right, I'm done. I told you I wasn't gonna talk tonight, and I lied.
Did you wanna go first?
Cliff, I'll stand up first, then Steve.
No, go ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll ask you.
I think that, um, you know, I sit, it's my fourth, uh, time through this process. And I, I seem to say the same thing every year, and yet, I'm not sure why, whether I'm just all wet or it doesn't soak in. Um, the town of Wareham, um, is not, um, in that much of a fiscal hole, that we can't support our town. And here's why. When you look at total revenue of Wareham, I'm talking about Wareham now, not government, not school, but the town of Wareham, we actually have quite a bit of money between our water districts, fire districts, government, school, and, um, what's the one I'm missing? I'm missing one. Uh, enterprise fund, thank you. When you take all of that money, and we're charging people for that already, uh, and people say, hey, I pay enough. And then, you see the, um, annual reports from all these different little enterprises that we have out there, right? Um, you're never gonna get a, and I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just trying to be real here. You're not gonna get people to go to a ballot box and say, I'm gonna vote to raise my own taxes, when there are balances in all these accounts. Right? So, I, I think I mentioned the Rich Bowen, I see him over there with his little computer. I think I've mentioned it to him a few times, that is there a way, um, for the town of Wareham, all the four or five different entities, uh, to come together in, whatever this number was, two point...
Nine.
What is it?
Two point nine.
Two point nine, right? Thank you, Judy. Um, to come together and, and take a bite, if you will, on the money we already collected and haven't spent. Uh, you know, could the, just, somebody mentioned, people bringing suggestions to you. Can, for example, let's just say, the Ontit Fire District, can they bring an article to their, uh, annual meeting that says, uh, I vote to, I, I vote to approve a transfer of five hundred grand, uh, to the town of Wareham? Can they do that legally? Can somebody go to the Wareham, uh, district and put an article on there that says, I vote to move five hundred grand to the town of Wareham? If that's possible and legal, right?
It would have to be a gift.
Uh, we could...
It would have to be a gift and be accepted and, you know...
Right. However that works, right? My point is, if we could do that legally somehow, a gift, I'm sure they can write a gift, depending on their rules, but is there a way to look at those funds that have balances that we've already collected from the taxpayers to try to solve some of this problem? I'm not saying it solves it all, but is there, is there a way to do that? My second comment would be that, um, and again, four times around, we've talked about this over the last five or six weeks, that, um, regionalization, we talk about regionalization. We're kind of in regionalized in our own town, between different departments. If somebody's, um, if somebody is in the environmental services department, um, what difference does it make what building they're in, doing their environmental services? If we're paying people to be, perform environmental maintenance stuff, uh, we should be able to guide them through proper management to any building we own. If somebody is in the maintenance area of any department, we should be able to manage that person to fix stuff that's either in a school building, in a town building, uh, on town property. We don't even do that. It's all separated. So, when you go to the townspeople, these are the things you hear. Um, hey, you guys can't even combine your own services, but you want me to pay more so you can keep your own separate governments going. This is what you hear. Uh, so, I think that, that's another area, that in order to prove to the taxpayer that we're using their dollars wisely, and we may be, but in terms of this regionalization stuff, I think that, you gotta make some effort here, as, as the school committee and the board of selectmen, town administrator, school superintendent, um, if we don't make that effort, we lose a bunch of people. If we don't try to get money from another bucket, we lose that bunch of people. So, when you go to the polls to vote for this, you lose. It's not just, I'm not gonna give them any more money. I don't feel that they're, uh, using my current money wisely. My third point is, over the healthcare issue, um, and I keenly pay attention to this because that is my business. And the companies, big companies in this country, uh, a lot bigger than the town of Wareham, are starting to do a lot of things that, um, maybe please the president, but, uh, really tick off the employees, is one, they're starting not to cover their employees at all, and throwing them into this deep hole, which really, um, if you like your employees, it's not fair to do that, 'cause the cost is higher, and you may lose your doctor, and you, and there's all kinds of other things that go along with that. You pay more in a premium, you pay more in deductibles. Uh, it's not a very nice thing to do, but companies are doing that. The other thing is, is that companies are really beginning to turn, turn the tide on who they cover. So, um, if you're a single person, you get a single plan. If you're a married person with a family, you get a single plan. No more family coverage. And they starting to knock off spouses, kids, and all that other sort of stuff. So, um, you know, is that drastic? I don't know. But, you have to look at the way companies are managing their businesses to stay afloat. And that's one way that they're doing it, is they're just covering the employee. And the family now can go to gov.org, um, and try to survive for themselves. I don't think it's such a great deal for people. I'm fortunate and blessed to have health insurance through my company. Um, if that was to change, that would be a problem. So, you know, just off the top of my head, you know, you talk about what people are saying to you. The other question that, uh, came up, somebody had called me this past week, was over the Ora Tista Regional School. And, um, is, I don't know, it's just a question, I don't know the answer, that's why I'm gonna throw it out. Is there a way, Madam Superintendent, to limit the number of students that you allow to go to that school?
No.
So, you know, if, if five hundred wanted to go, you'd have to allow that?
They have to leave.
Say it again. No, but we pay per student to go to that school, correct?
Yes, but because of school choice, uh, from the state level, we do not get to choose how many students go. ORR decides how many Wareham students that they'll accept.
So, it's basically the money coming out of your pocket.
Correct.
So, if you only have a thousand dollars to spend, right, you can only spend a thousand dollars, and nobody can, can they force you to spend more than that, is, I guess, my question. And that's the question from the person.
Yes, they take it out in our assessment. It's school choice, tuition out, and so, that's taken out prior to us receiving the funds.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause that was a question somebody asked, and they're saying, well, why can't we just say, hey, we can afford a hundred students a year, uh, from your, your budget, right? And so, that's all you allow, is a hundred. And over a hundred, you know, you can't go, you have to come here. So, you don't have an option then?
No.
Thank you.
I don't know, it's, and I, I appreciate what Steve was saying there, but, um, as far as the districts are concerned, um, I don't know that they have any big pots of money. I know that the, the Wareham Fire Water District has money they collect through the use of fees on their water system, that they use to put aside to build another well and do things like that and do whatever. I also know that the districts are not restricted by Proposition two and a half. They have no restriction. They need money, they can get money, there's nothing we can do about it. They have, they do not have the restrictions that we have. Uh, as far as them writing us a check, that's not gonna happen. I mean, they, they run their entities, we run our entities, uh, nobody can expect that. I mean, you know, it's just, that's just not realistic. As far as the town having a pot of money, I'd like to know where it is, because I've never seen a pot of money, and I, and as far as our enterprise fund is concerned, uh, that's governed by law, what we can take and what we can do as far as the enterprise fund. If there's a pot of money there, it's supposed to go back to the rate users. The only monies that we can save are monies that we're saving either for an upgrade or something of that nature, or, or some, you know, but as far as saving a pot of money, you have to give it back to the users. And once upon a time, we used to take money from the enterprise fund that helped fund the budget, nine hundred eighty thousand dollars, in fact. And, boy, all of a sudden, it became a big to-do, and we gave back the nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. I don't know, you weren't here, Derek, at the time, but this was back in, well, we used to do it as a regular course. We used it through admin fees. We used to take some money and help sort of with the budget. And you can see, and it's in, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the two thousand and five thing. If you look at it, you'll see it right there. Uh, I think it was nine, it was nine hundred eighty thousand dollars at its peak. I just remember that number. Uh, my, my fellow colleagues that sat on the board back there remember how that was done. And then, uh, some people got, got upset about it, and ultimately, that was reduced, and that nine hundred eighty, eighty thousand came out, which, by the way, is part of our problem as well, 'cause we took that nine hundred eighty away from us, which was reoccurring money. And we also took away the growth factor. Well, we were getting that new growth because the economy was flying so high, so we took that out of the economy, out of our budget too, which, of course, has caused us more headaches, as everybody knows. But, there's really no pots of money, and I, I don't want people at home to think that there's pots of money sticking around someplace, that we can just all of a sudden take money out whenever we need it, 'cause they just don't exist. There is none of those pots of money. And even the districts have to earmark money. They can't just hold money and say, well, we're gonna keep this money and grow this pot of money. They can't do that. They're, they're just like we are. If you, you have to either give it back, or you've gotta have it earmarked for specific use. And I know the water district in particular is, needs to build a new well. And the reason they need to do that is because we need new water supplies all the time. And they are getting ready to do that, and that's why they've been saving a few dollars over there. And if they have a little pot of money, that's all of what it is. And they are gonna be building a new well very shortly. Uh, they do a really good job over there. I know, I've sat with them, I've talked to them, I'm sort of the district rep, I've spent some time with both of the, well, actually, I haven't got to answer, to be honest with you, but I will. Um, and, um, we've spent some time, so, but I, there's just no pots of money out there. I don't want people at home to think that there are, because there are not pots of money, that we can just call on reserves.
Thank you. Cliff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just ask everyone to...
Yeah.
Ask everyone to sort of bear with me. Um, I have a tendency to get a little long-winded, but I'll try to keep the charge up here.
Okay. Your chairman just, your chairman just showed me the time, and it's approaching ten after seven, so she may cut you off if, uh, nobody else does.
And she's done that before too, but I respect her.
I'm sure she has.
Um, I, I've, I've listened, and I, I've been quiet, and I, I just think that we've got a multitude of issues here. And this, this, I'd like to put up a couple of, uh, caution lights, if, if you will. Um, the most important thing for me is, um, we, we can't, we can't lay blame. We, we can't approach this budget from a blame perspective. We can't make our public employees and the people that provide service to our citizens the culprits, whether it be healthcare or anything else. You know, we are paying folks to do a job, uh, whether it be working on municipal maintenance, whether it be being a police officer, an ambulance driver, or EMT, whatever. We are paying people to do a job, and these people, for the most part, are dedicated to what they do, dedicated to the citizens of Wareham. So, it, it really, really bothers me that people out there could get the idea that our problems lie at the feet of our public employees. And I, I don't want that perception to be out there. I don't think anyone in this room believes that. But, I just don't want that to get out there, that, you know, that is the problem. Sure, we've got a real healthcare problem in this country, uh, the town of Wareham, along with a, a whole lot of other municipalities, states, and of course, the national government. So, I think that, uh, we have to sort of recognize the fact now that we've got an immediate problem. And, you know, we have done, I've heard, you know, some really, really good ideas and some really good hypotheses and some really good, uh, strategies. But, the bottom line is, where I'm coming from, uh, as a seventy-year-old man, former public employee, is the fact that we've got an immediate problem that's gonna require immediate action. And I just don't think that we can just sit back and say, well, we're gonna kick down, kick the can down the road another year. I don't think that's possible. And this is why I don't think it's possible. Most of our contracts, uh, at least those that, that we've already negotiated, in terms of the healthcare, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sullivan, are pretty much cast to granite, for, at least for a while.
We have approximately, including this year, five years.
Right. So, you know, that, that is a problem that is not gonna easily go away. So, we may, we can wish that we didn't have that problem, or we could wish that there were some solutions to that problem, but the bottom line is, there is an immediate need associated with that problem. And we have to address that need. That need is not gonna go away. Um, and, you know, again, let's, let's try not to make our public employees the culprits here, because we know, everyone in this room knows that there's inequities in terms of the folks that work for the town, the folks that work for the school system, and the folks that work for the districts. The, their fringe benefac, packages are not the same. And, and so, I think that, even though it's adding to the problem, we have to address the problem immediately, and it's a revenue problem. That's what we've got. We've got a revenue problem. And we, I personally believe that we've gotta address this problem on the revenue side of the ledger. I don't think there's any other way to address it. But, by so doing, we've gotta be honest with the people in Wareham. We've gotta be honest with the citizens of Wareham, and I think, I do believe that the citizens of Wareham have a... the citizens of Wareham have an awful lot more trust in our elected boards than they've had in the past. I think this board of selectmen has a level of credibility and trust that has really, really increased since these members have been on this board. I think we've got a town administrator that's open, honest, and dedicated to his position. And I think that the people in town recognize that, Mr. Sullivan. I think that we've got a school committee that is committed to providing the best possible education for our kids. And we hate to see our kids and families moving their children out of the town of Wareham, because I for one, still believe there is a quality education at hand in the town of Wareham. So, I think all of these problems exist, but I think the problem is now, it's immediate, and it's a revenue problem. And the most important thing that we can do right now for the town of Wareham is to come up with a cooperative strategy that everybody can get behind, and get out there to our community members, and let them know, all of us, let them know how important it is for them to support this strategy, whatever that strategy may be. This has got to be something that we all get behind, because if we're divided on this right now, there is no solution. The only solution is receivership, from where I sit right now. And I've worked under receivership in the state of Rhode Island. It's not a pretty picture. So, I think that the most important thing that I will commit to, and I hope that everyone in this room commits to, is whatever we come up with a solution, let's all get behind it. And let's all get out there and put a positive spin on it to our community members. And let's, let's be honest with them. And I, you know, I think that a lot of what's been said is true. So, I think that in terms of selling it, we can sell it. I know we can. And I know we can come up with a decent solution, but I think the solution is now, and it has to be done now. And I honestly think the solution is, we have a problem, and the problem is a revenue problem, and we've got to deal with that immediately, because it's not going to go away. Because some of the things that we're dealing with right now are cast in granite, and they won't change. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think everyone addressed most of the points that I would have brought up previously. And it's a little premature, because actually, due to weather, the Finance Committee has not met with this budget yet. So, tomorrow night, I think we have our work cut out for us. We've already talked about the agenda, and it's, actually seems like at the beginning of this meeting, what we're going to do from here in has been outlined. We need to look at this budget with $2.9 million worth of cuts. And I'd like to remind you that these three boards sat together last year, we couldn't come up with a balanced budget, and I believe those cuts were $840-something thousand dollars that hurt greatly. Does anyone really think we can come up with three times that amount in cuts, given that the cuts that were already taken last year? So, we will do it. We will do it as an exercise, because ultimately, it will be up to the people of the town to approve a budget. So, we will prepare a budget with the assistance of the town administrator, and I assume the superintendent is going to work. We're going to sharpen our pencils, I hate that expression, but we're going to look at everything that can be cut. And we're going to put a budget out there that is going to be beyond painful. And it's not going to reflect a town that I want to live in, with no library, no services that we can point to. And knowing that it's only one year, because the next year, the same thing's going to happen. And then we're going to put together a budget that's realistic to try to figure out how to get out of this hole. So, echoing everyone else's sentiments, that's the work that we have to do. And I expect that...
We also have the half a million dollars this year.
Oh, the half a million dollars from this year that we're still trying to make up. So, yeah, so we have a lot of numbers to put together. I thank everyone's patience, but I also really appreciate the fact that these three boards are sitting in this room together, working together on the problem.
Thank you.
So, some of you know, I'm all about not walking out of room unless there's next steps. It's the nails-down chalkboard for me, because just going out and, you know, us all making statements and, and, no, no, no.
I've got my job tomorrow.
No, no, and valid, valid, valid statements. And I think that there were a lot of good ideas that came out of this. One of the, I'm just going to put something out there. One of the things that I heard, and not from everybody on the board, and I echo Cliff's point regarding, you know, you can't get behind a plan unless there's actually a plan in place. But the one thing that has come up several different times is about bringing new revenue, and it's a revenue adjustment, not an override, but, but that if, as, if, as these three committees, the only way to get behind the idea of selling a revenue adjustment, I know that it would be hard for me to do it unless I saw the plan on how we might go about selling that. And I always start from the end result, is that we need a ballot question, we need what's going to go in front of town meeting voters, we need, so then, how do we get, how do we work backwards from that? So, if it's open forums, if it's transparency, if it's documentation that needs to be held from the school side, every single time there's been a request that's come in regarding a piece of data, that's been transparent and put up on our website. And I think that that's starting to build some trust for the people that actually want to go and download it and actually dive into it. They're starting to see that what is really being said is, is there. So, if we basically come up with this plan, and I'm looking for volunteers around this table, I will absolutely lead, not lead, but basically, you know, help put this document together. But to come up with a plan between now and April, with the tasks that need to happen from open forums, to sharing of documentation, to ballot question, to everything, basically a step-by-step process of what is needed to hopefully get the information in town voter hands. So, the only way that we're going to do it, it's not the last time that we went for a debt exclusion and override, where we just said, "Shh," and then all of a sudden, there was a pop, there was a question on the ballot question. There needs to be a communication plan that leads all the way up to it, so then there is some sort of shot of town meeting voters really understanding what the problems are in this town, and that there is a revenue problem, and how we can actually get a vote there, so.
Just, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, just, just briefly, we haven't had our meeting yet, and we will tomorrow night. And, but we have already started the framework, and then it's going to be a question of working with everybody. You need to also remember that the warrant closes on a certain date, and we have to have an article in there before that closes. Now, that doesn't mean we have to have a finished product before that closes, but we need to have a war, an article in there before that.
Then that goes, all the dates and everything go into the...
Right, right. And at that point, you're still looking to finish up the framework after the fact, before you go to town meeting. Then you have the time till April to do it, but you need that in there. So, what we have, from our standpoint, which we'll talk about tomorrow, is developing not just a framework, but coming up with some sort of a number and, and a, and a plan to get to that number and what that number means. So, I'm willing to work with anybody. In my limited time that I have, I will work with, with anybody that wants to work on it. But I think we've already set some of the groundwork, and it might be who some people that come to our meeting tomorrow to talk and listen to what we have to say, because we really haven't had a chance to discuss it yet.
I think we're also missing the fourth leg of our chair, which is the Capital Planning Committee.
They're coming next Wednesday to our meeting.
Excellent.
Could I just say one last thing? I know, I've heard the word salesmanship sort of used a couple of times, and although I appreciate, you know, what you're trying to say, I don't think we have to sell anything. I think this is right and just, and that when we all in this room come up with a plan that is, that we want to go forward with, whatever that plan is, I think there's so many heads in here, there's been so much, will be so much work involved, that we won't have to sell anything. We'll have it. We'll all be behind it, and we'll make it happen. And so, I'd like to not use that word, because I don't think we need to sell anything to anybody. I think what we need to do is inform, for sure, but not sell.
Good word.
Okay? Thank you.
Although I appreciate fully what you're saying, Patrick. I think there's another dimension to this, to this problem, which really put, needs to be put out on the table. And that is, if we compare, let's, Bourne did three overrides during the 1990s. You can't compare 2014 to the 1990s for the typical middle-class family. The fact is, the amount of discretionary income and the problems that people are having are just keeping food on the table and roofs over their head, are far greater now than they were 20 years ago or 30 years ago. And so, what we're really asking them to do is take some of their limited discretionary income and give it to us to use in a way that we think is a slam dunk better use of their money than allowing them to keep it. I don't take for granted that that's an easy sell. I do believe it is a sell. I think it's a difficult sell, and I think we need to be prepared for it to be rejected.
I just, I just, I understand what you're saying, but I think salesmanship has a bad connotation with it. Anytime you tell somebody you're trying to sell them something, it just brings up the wrong thing for me. And I don't think I need to sell people anything. I think I need to tell them, inform them, make them understand why I think that this is the necessary thing, why I want them to give them the money, why I want them to trust in me, I want all that to happen. But I don't think I need to sell them anything.
I think that it's a communication plan that helps educate and inform, but ultimately convince and get people, thank you. It's to understand that, that this is actually good for them, so.
It's a matter of persuasion, I think, is maybe the word, is maybe the middle ground between presenting information and selling. Well, it is a big difference, but I mean, I really think that, you know, if you're going to, you know, per se persuade, what you need to do is to create the this or that scenario. And that's going to be what I understand, the FinCom exercise is going to be tomorrow night. If you're going to cut $2.9 million, where's it coming from? What does the budget look like if we go into town meeting, based upon the current revenue projections? What is the quote "balanced budget" unquote going to look like? What is going to be lost? What is not going to be gained, which is a different way of saying the same thing, but in terms of capital? And where does this leave the town next year? I'd like people to look five years down the road and see where it really leaves the town. Does it mean that the state is coming in here and taking us over at that point? We know it's not going to happen next year, probably won't happen the year after that. At what point do we belly up to receivership? Because I think eventually, we're going to get there.
I agree with that approach, and Mr. Swett said...
You guys, you guys, speak up.
I agree with that approach, and what Mr. Swett said earlier about having a contingent budget, have two budgets at town meeting, so it is real. But I also want to touch on what Madam Chair had said too, about the transparency and having everything online, and I'd like to see everything that was handed out here today on the town website somewhere, if that's okay.
Mr. Flaherty, it's a no-brainer. It happens anyways, once it's presented to the, to the Board of Selectmen, the, these budget documents, as well as the others. The only reason it hasn't happened is the last two meetings, we've had one snowstorm, and one, there was only three members of the Board of Selectmen. So, I appreciate the question, and I'm not trying to get hot under the collar.
Oh, no, I wasn't, I wasn't trying...
It is, it is something that we...
I was just being very matter-of-fact, I'm sorry. I just, I just like, I like to point people to things, and, and it's tough when I don't know where they are, so if this is going to go up, that'd be great.
What I think is, and I think to, to your point, is often people tell me it's hard to find these on the, on the town website. So, whether you look under Administration, or it's under Accounting, but in the upper-right-hand corner are usually the new documents. So, I think Matt is available, can put a, a yellow warning sign almost on there, which maybe that's very appropriate for this budget, so.
Okay.
By the way, when I was growing up, I always thought the wind chillant controlled the weather, so you may be...
Pete, before you close, could you go back? Jeff, if you wouldn't mind, go back to the beginning, where you were talking about what $3 million is equated to per taxpayer? Not per house, but, you know, not per family, but per taxpayer.
It's not, the money, the, it was per median household, because that's the way we, we tax based on property, we don't tax based on the number of people who live in the property. So...
Right, but you also don't tax the people that necessarily live in the property, you're taxing the homeowners.
That's correct. One, one bill, regardless of the number of people that are there, right. And that works out, a couple of years ago, it worked out to a little, a little over $60 per million.
What was it last year? You remember when we did for the roof and all that? Do you remember what that was?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't talking about, because that was a debt exclusion, and those were...
But we had some, wasn't there some overrides?
Yes, no, there were debt exclusions.
All?
There was one override.
Oh, there was, yes.
I thought there was.
The numbers haven't changed that much.
About $200 for 3 million?
Think of it as, round numbers, $200 for 3 million for the, for the median household.
Then to my colleague's point, Patrick, I got to tell you, $50 a week for somebody? Is that what it is?
$200 a year, per year.
Maybe you don't have to sell. But I got to tell you, you have to address all those, all those other factors, because...
And I'd just like to chime in and remind people that, okay, in improving the town, we're also improving our real estate values.
Absolutely.
I mean, that, that is the big thing that we're looking at. We're giving you something that's really intangible, I can't put a value on that, per se, but what those $200 are buying you in the long run is in terms of decorating your home.
I think you just, you just have to remember that you're trying to talk to, I forget what the number was that came out, but you have an election, people have to come out, only those people that come out are going to vote, right? So, you're talking about a small percentage, a lot of those don't have kids in school, right? You have all these things, I don't use, I don't use police, I don't use the school system, and I'm voting no. So, you have to really, there is a salesmanship to it. I understand what Patrick's saying, but you're going to have to go a lot better than the last time.
We'll tell them what they're getting for their buck, that's all.
To even try to get it to...
And, and the one thing that I'll say to that is, if, that at the end of the day, we are all not mind readers. And so, if there is a piece of information or a question that you have about the budget of any line item, it is important to be able to get to the right people to get an informed answer instead of forming an opinion. There are several pieces of data out there, and you can cut it up multiple ways. We have responded, and I know the town administrator has too, responded to requests as best that we can, but if there is a piece of information that is preventing someone to understand the, the difficult position that this town is in right now, then I will just ask people to ask that question, get the information, and make an informed...
They have to actually get the information from us somehow, and not from the coffee shop.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, we can work with Mr. Sullivan to create a clearinghouse, so to speak, on the town website, to have that kind of information. Perhaps it's time to have a direct link, just as we do for, you know, Board of Selectmen, Town Departments, Town Committees, Town Budget. There's nothing wrong with doing that.
We have a new website. Where all of our budget documents are right up there, so we're happy to help link too.
Okay. I think we need to wrap it up here. Going forward, I know you would want a plan. I think what we do is we wait for the FinCom to do theirs. I'm not going to be able to attend tomorrow night, but I'll certainly watch.
You're stirring tomorrow night?
Well, you're stirring tomorrow night, and based upon that, we can come up with an agenda for the next time around.
No, and I think that then we can report back based on the communication that's coming on, what those next steps are, so.
Okay.
Actually, we may be live, and that's Mr. Bob White, I don't know if we're going live tomorrow night or not.
Oh, no.
So, are you saying, Mr. Chairman of the FinCom, that tomorrow night, you're going to begin to put together, without, without any review at all, of the new budget, you're putting together an override proposal? Is that what I heard you say?
No, that's not what you heard us say. What you heard us say was, we were going to review the budget and the parameters, start building the options, because you're looking at options here. A $2.9 million cut, we're, we're in the process of building that, but as far as, what I said earlier, was that we're starting with the framework of it, because we are certainly not the ones that are going to have to fill in the framework. That would be coming from the two, we're an advisory committee. We don't tell you guys what to do, we advise you, and then...
That's what I was just trying to clarify that, because it sounded like you were putting the framework together with no other discussion, you haven't seen it, you haven't met. the framework together with no other discussion, you haven't seen it, you haven't met.
Well, that's not, that's not true, we haven't seen it, because it was all forwarded out, well, now it's a new budget now, thanks to the extra thing, but that was electronically...